Check one, two. Check one, two.
With the Advisory Board and the City Commission of Fort Lauderdale. With the Chair of the Budget Advisory Board, please call your role.
Vice Chair Jaflo. Commissioner Herbst Appointee John Rodstrom.
Here.
Commissioner Glassman Appointee Bill Brown.
Here.
And Chair Donaldson, present. Both the Vice Chair and the Chair are Mayor Appointees. Ross Camerata and Michael Marshall, Prabhu Lin Patel, and Christian Maserali are not available today.
Okay, okay. So let us begin, Mr. City Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So actually, I'm gonna ask if the Chair of the Budget Advisory Board's begin. He has some words to say, and then we have a presentation.
Very good. Mr. Donaldson.
Thank you, Commissioners, Mayor, Vice Mayor. We met last time, our last meeting was just about seven weeks ago. It was May 2nd. And since that point, the Budget Advisory Board met four times officially. And many of us met with city staff on other additional meetings and with some meetings with some of you. Today's focus, I really want to make sure that we're looking at the top line. There are, we have an additional meeting on August 15th, prior to the public hearings of September 5th and September 13th. So today's focus is only on really the big picture and not into all of the detailed details that would be going in. Today, you're, this is our meeting prior to you setting the ad valorem rate on your July, your first July meeting of July 5th. We're also going to give you a recommendation on the fire assessment fee, which is also set for you to vote on, on July 5th. So we have some of those recommendations, but I just wanted to tee off this meeting that we're gonna be talking at a higher level today. And our initial feedback that we gave in our meeting last week with the City Manager, and I'll share that with you. But rather than steal his thunder, I thought it would be appropriate if we, he made his presentation as he did to us. And then we'll come back to what our, what our feedback to him was. And then we have a STANTEC presentation, which the representative of STANTEC is not able to be here today. So the manager of budget, Laura Reese, will be making that presentation, and then I'll give you some feedback on that. We also weighed in on, we had a presentation from Finance in regards to the water sewer item. That is on your first item on your next meeting, on your conference meeting. And so at the end of this joint workshop, I'll give you some feedback that the Budget Advisory Board had in regards to that presentation as well. So if you don't have any, do you have any questions for our team here before we go to the City Manager?
Any questions?
No.
There being none. Why did we schedule this meeting for today if STANTEC could not be here today?
I believe it was a last-minute cancellation this morning.
I can answer that.
Okay.
I can answer that, Honorable Mayor. So there was a family emergency of the individual that was supposed to do the presentation.
Okay, all righty.
I'm here.
Oh, there you are. Mr. City Manager.
All right, good morning, Honorable Mayor, Vice Mayor, and Commissioners. It is my pleasure to stand before you today to discuss the proposed preliminary budget for the upcoming fiscal year and how it aligns with the key priorities established by, by you all earlier this year. In a meeting held in February at the YMCA, we engaged in a productive dialogue to identify critical areas that warrant focus and investment. And public safety, infrastructure, and economic development emerged as some of the driving forces behind your vision for a prosperous and thriving community. As we gather here today, I'm excited to share with you this budget. It's a working document, and it can be seen as a comprehensive plan for the year to come that will target crucial priorities. And I would be remiss if I didn't take a moment to express our gratitude to the members of our esteemed Budget Advisory Board. Their expertise, dedication, and countless hours of thoughtful insight have been instrumental in developing the proposed budget that stands before us today. So throughout the project, throughout the process, the Board reviewed financial projections. They scrutinized our expenditure patterns and also offered many invaluable suggestions on resource allocation. So we have a presentation, and we're gonna cover today nine points. These nine points are going to serve as our blueprint for discussion and also efforts to improve the CRA designated areas of the city. With that said, you will hear from the BAB later today. They concur, the BAB concurs that the city is able to maintain the low millage rate of 4.1193 for its 17th consecutive year. And again, that's a great, a great portion of that is again for attributed to your leadership, City Commissioners, for your vision of maintaining fiscal responsibility throughout the, the year. So one of the things that, that the Chair will discuss later on is the fire assessment fee. The, to account for the increase in rising costs of fire rescue and fire suppression support, staff is proposing to transition from a defined three-year cost recovery model to a more agile one that does it on a year-to-year basis. And this is an opportunity for us to true up the revenues with the expenditures. As mentioned before, we have a rise of expenditures due to labor costs and also due to inflation and cost of materials and equipment. And so what we are proposing is to look at our costs and true that up. And this would bring an increase in the fees per dwelling. Correct, and I can give you more specifics on that. Laura, I'm sorry, Laura can give you more specifics.
Well, I don't need specifics. I just, I just wanna, so, so the point is, though, everyone in the city is paying for this even though it's not in their neighborhood.
Yes, but somehow it, it impacts, yeah, everyone in the city, yes, of course.
Right, so, so if we're, if we're doing, if we're spending $20 million in Neighborhood A and Neighborhood W is on the other side of the city, they're still contributing to the stormwater remediation program that we have going on in the city, is that correct?
Correct, citywide.
Okay, thank you.
And also all of the businesses, because businesses pay a different rate of stormwater than, than residential.
Okay.
Also, does that include sanctuaries, households of faith? Are they included in that assessment?
I, yes.
I believe so.
Yes.
Yes, they don't pay the property tax, but they pay the other non-advalorem.
So every structure, basically, is responsible for this?
Yes, and, and those fees you'll see in part of the presentation of stormwater going forward. As we continue to, about every fourth or fifth year, do additional, as additional funding of additional projects that are, are projected out, that fee will continue to rise because we'll be doing another 200 million at a time of bonding for that fund. So that fund will look different five years from now than monthly rate. And that'll be in part of the next presentation for STANTEC.
So this, this 258 dollars is then to, is then attributed to the first tranche of neighborhoods, the first eight neighborhoods?
Yes, and the, and the, and the costs that were associated with projects that had already been started and, and paying the debt service for prior. So, you know, when we start a new, a new neighborhood, a new project, part of your monthly fee is part of the future costs. But those costs are going over a 20 or 30 year. So all of the improvements that have been done since some of you came into office and really started looking at making sure that the infrastructure of the city became more of a priority. So over the last six years, we've done more than just those neighborhoods.
Great, thank you.
Mayor, Laura Reese, if I might add, just to provide a little bit of extra information. The stormwater assessment does not just fund the capital. It's all of the operating costs related to stormwater in the city. So the revenue received supports stormwater.
That's good to know. And after this workshop meeting, I wonder if our city staff can move one of these cameras? Because I cannot see the person who's standing at the podium. And so when we have our regular meeting, it would be helpful if we can just move that camera. Maybe get a closer view of Commissioner, Vice Mayor. The camera would have to get a little closer to you. Hope you don't mind.
We will, we will, we'll address that.
Mr. Mayor, can I ask, can I ask you a question?
Sure, go ahead.
Yeah, that, that, what's the total for that stormwater? That's per house. What's the total number for the city? Do you have that, so just put in perspective?
Like the total amount of the bond?
Two, uh, 258 or 284 times the number of houses. What's that total number?
Oh.
We're getting them for you.
Okay.
30.4 million.
Thank you. That's per year, right?
Per year.
Please proceed.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So here are some key revenue changes listed below are those. Again, the significant one is the ad valorem, 20.9 million. And there are increases due to different fees that are, are taking place. So we have all these revenues enhancements, if you will, or, or changes. And at, at the same time, we have key expenditure changes. You will see that one of the biggest cost drivers for operations is labor. And so we have an increase in salary and wage expenses of $11 million. Additionally, you will see listed other expenditures that we are experiencing as well. And so again, these are the, the expenses that we have to account for in our budget. So to address some of the improvements, enhancements that we, that were requested by the Commission and also that were noted as well by the Budget Advisory Board. Certain things that we'd like to do are listed below. For example, it's from the City Attorney's Office. We understand the need to make sure that we have the best and most qualified technology. So City Attorney's Office proposing a cloud subscription of $170,000 for, for document management and for legal document management. We're also looking from the City Manager's Office, a few perspectives that can address some of the needs. For instance, appropriating $315,000 for housing navigation that will support efforts like Task Force to help the unsheltered population reach better levels of success. We're looking at having also for the newly formed Public Affairs Division, an Admin Aid Halftime or Half FTE, a Public Affairs Program Manager. And also having funding for the FTL Magazine that was very well received across the community. And also considering making sure that we have accountability in place and also a, a mean for receiving any issues or concerns from our employees. An OPS Officer Professional Standards Hotline at 14,599. On the Development Services side, there was a proposal to improve the code and mixed-use code specifically. And that effort would cost an additional $225,000. And also in Finance, we recognize the need to advance projects proactively. And one of our, our biggest challenges is making sure that we have procurement in place. So we, we are proposing as procurement specialists at a price of $114,000. 114,958 dollars. And then, again, public safety is paramount. So you will see here some improvements. The BAB also coincided with Fire Chief that it's important to expand on third-person rescues. So an additional nine fire rescue personnel would help outfit an additional two rescues to have three-person rescues. And that would ensure that we are more efficient in our response to fire, to EMS calls. And we also recognize the need to have a public information officer specifically devoted for fire rescue, for emergency response. We see more rain more often, more thunderstorms, and also heavy activity with respect to emergencies in, in the horizon. Want to make sure we're ready and prepared. So that budget of a, a close to a million dollars would appropriate that. And then also, we recognize that Herron Garage will have a need for a fire engine. And, and we do recognize that the Herron Garage won't be built until 2025, 2026. But we need to start that order as it takes anywhere from two to three years to build a fire engine. So this would be that down payment, $1,099. And then for equipment replacement, repair, and maintenance, we're proposing $151,000 for fire rescue. The BAB also recognized the need to have ample staff and ability to recruit staff for a lot of our programs and activities across the parks. So we are proposing appropriating $112,000 to improve the minimal part-time employees' compensation. Because we find that we are competing against fast-food restaurants that are paying sometimes more than our staff here at Parks and Recreation. So that is going to address that. And also, we recognize the need for public safety with respect to police and are appropriating an additional 14 patrol officers and homeless outreach support team as well at $2.7 million of investment. Again, additional enhancements of $6.1 million are listed there. Now, because there are additional expenditures, we certainly need to balance some of these things. And so listed below are certain reductions that we are proposing. We are, we are proposing a reduction of the fellows program, reduction of vacancies from Strategic Communications, GIS position, look, the police officers that are being proposed from, from the 14 are targeting, supporting the, the businesses, retail shops like in La Solas in the beach area, which attract high-volume concentration of, of visitors. So we want to make sure we have ample support staff for that as well.
Okay, and also on the Chief Diversity Officer, what's happening there?
So we have, again, shifted our, our way to, to promote diversity and inclusion by having more training, more programs. We can outfit that with our Office of Professional Standards. And also combined with the Human Resources Department, we're able to ensure that we have more training, more programs that will bring about the inclusion that's necessary for, for the organization to thrive.
So the, the role of the Chief Diversity Officer is being taken over, or the responsibilities are being taken over by other persons in the department, is that what you're saying?
It's being, it's being segmented by different other individuals and also by programs that we are outsourcing and we're bringing in added value from best practices from vendors.
Okay.
So making it more of a culture versus one person that is only focusing on that. Make sure everyone is aware of it, so by the training, so we ask this to my question.
Okay, so it's as long as, as long as the mission is not, is not, you know, eliminated from, from, you know, our, our, from our city. I mean, obviously, we, we had a goal here. I just want to make sure that we're not losing sight of that goal and that it's a continual effort to try to maintain diversity within our, within our, our city staffing. Okay.
And then it's just a follow-up on your question in regards to the nighttime economy program. If you remember, a year ago, in the current 2023 budget, we had pressed to make sure that we added four additional nighttime to the code enforcement.
Right.
And so that is in a different, different area of Development Services. And that is where the boots are hitting the road and, and helping the, the police at night. And I know that in my particular neighborhood, that has helped a lot with some of the problem vacation rentals, et cetera. And I've heard that from some of the businesses. So we, we supported this shift.
Okay, very good, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Manager.
Right, and again, Mayor, we are certainly posed and, and aiming towards diversity and inclusion. It's an important factor for organizations to thrive. And so I just want to be clear that, you know, rather than support a one position, what we're doing is we're amplifying by supporting programs. We're supporting structural-focused trainings that are gonna come in and help us reach the, the diversity that we need. The, and, and, and those programs are certainly gonna be, cost more than $161,000, I'll tell you that. But we have staff that has those ambitions, and we'll make sure that that happens in our upcoming year as well.
Thank you.
Now, as far as Commission priorities, these are the priorities that you all mentioned. And here is a list of some of the initiatives and examples of how we are addressing those. In a memo that was prepared some weeks ago, when the preliminary budget was released, specifics on how this would take place were, were revealed. And so we are just sharing with you those initiatives and how we're going to target your priorities as defined in February. I'm going to ask now for Laura Reese to assist me with dialoguing about the future. We need to think about not only our operations today, but how do we support the continued growth and expansion of Fort Lauderdale? And so Laura Reese will talk about the CIP funding.
Thank you, Greg, Mayor and Commissioner Laura Reese. So in the preliminary capital improvement plan, we included $300 million in the preliminary plan towards moving forward capital improvements. And this doesn't include the 200 million in stormwater bonds that are planned to be issued in '23 or the funding related to the new water plant. Those are not included in these numbers. So, and we have right now almost 700 million in unspent funds in current capital projects. So there's a lot of projects underway right now. So we want to make sure that it's clear to you and to the community that there's funding in place, projects are moving forward. We should be seeing them come to fruition in the upcoming years. So of the 200 million, 22.4 million is cash-funded CIP. So the amount that's highlighted again in 2024, 22.5 million is cash-funded or pay-as-you-go funding in the general fund capital. And so since the preliminary budget just focuses on the general fund to allow you all to set those maximum millage rates and fire assessment fees, we focused in on what it includes over the next five years. A lot of what's included are the fundamentals of infrastructure in our community. Streets, sidewalks, Lasolos mobility at $2.5 million. Southeast 8th Street Bridge Replacement. So a lot of it's street sidewalks, bridges, seawalls, the things that are important to our community to keep our resilience efforts moving forward. So the details are included as an exhibit. Any questions on that?
Yes, I have one. Out of that 22.5 million, how much of that is just tax dollars that are being transferred over versus grant funds or other sources of funding?
So the 22.5 million represents the general fund pay-as-you-go, not grant, no grants at all. So it's just of the general fund budget. So, it's just of the general fund budget. The operating budget transfers that much into the capital fund for the year. You're welcome. All right. And so, also, something that's really important to the city that we tried to demonstrate we're accounting for in the preliminary budget is replacement plans. So we've worked really hard with departments over the past few years to develop inventory of all of the assets that we have, and to try to, or all of our key assets, and to look for when they need to be replaced. And that makes sure that we're really strategically thinking about how and when we're going to fund the replacements. And you'll see more of that in our long-term financial planning. But, all funds for fleet in fiscal year '24, $19.4 million for replacement vehicles. So that's pretty, that's a lot of money. 212 new vehicles will be hitting the street in '24. Of that, $11.5 million are for the general fund portion. So, right around half is related to general fund. General fund is primarily driven by public safety, so police cars and fire apparatus. In the fire rescue department, we kind of have a larger hit this year from the SCBAs. That was grant-funded years ago, and it's scheduled to be replaced this year. So when you add that to our bunker gear and stretchers, $4.2 million is being appropriated for fire rescue replacement equipment. Police equipment is various technology in two boats, $135,000, license plate readers. So that's been a big success. I'm sure police is talking to y'all about it. But, $315,000 being allocated for license plate readers in the community, police. Everyone laughs at this when we do have an animal replacement plan. So, our dogs get to retire, our horses get to retire, and so we plan for that, and...
Do we have to pay a pension for this?
I think we have ongoing veterinary responsibilities, but that's it. So, yeah, $286,000.
Lifetime of fancy feast?
Yes. I'm sure they all deserve it. So, and then we have PC replacements. So for every laptop, every desktop, we know when it, we bought it and when it needs to be replaced this year, that's around a half a million dollars. So, in grand total, almost $25 million. And that's to make sure that all of our equipment is in good condition and that we're proactively managing that throughout the city. Any questions on the preliminary budget?
Any questions from the commission? Nothing further. Thank you.
All right. Thank you.
So, Mr. Donaldson, where do we go from here?
Okay. Just wanted to highlight a few of the things in follow-up to what they just presented to you, which was more of a big picture, which is what we really wanted to focus on today. So when I was in front of you in May 2nd, you know, we really were looking at a big shortfall of eight to $11 million if the ad valorem had come in only at 7%. So today, you know, the skies parted again. Instead of rain, we received a something else. We received the news that we had this kind of an increase of 11.9. So, taking that into account, but having done the work throughout the fiscal year as BAB in conjunction with all the department heads, et cetera, and had gone through the diligence of looking at line items and line items and how to be creative and respectful to your feedback, that we really wanted to try to make a 17th year. We, as a BAB, felt that, not unanimously, but that, and some people would have voted to not recommend keeping the ad valorem the same if not for the new number that was coming in from the property.
Well, we never had to come to that question, right?
Right. So, we did vote, and we support the city manager's recommendation of keeping the ad valorem the same. And we'll give you some reasons why. Also, I wanted to share with you that earlier in the year, BAB had suggested that we go from a three-year true-up on the fire assessment to yearly. I mean, every year, we're paying more for our services, and it allows us to keep, instead of running behind, by doing it every year. So that will be the recommendation of BAB going forward. Our expenses go up every year, and we should be collecting that.
Don't we have that option every year anyway? I mean, we're not, this commission, a commission vote today is not the same. And if this commission decides to change her mind next year for the next, you know, budget cycle, it can, it's not tied in with what we've decided today.
No. You do that on each year, as you do with your ad valorem. And if next year, they decided not to do true-up and pay for it through other means, or not enhance services to the same degree, that commission will have that option. But it'll probably be the same commission this time next year.
Right.
Before a '24 election.
And we have a year's experience, too, that we'll see how the money's been applied and whether it was sufficient or not.
Exactly. And then, I came to you between those meetings about the merchant service fee. And this new budget reflects that, as the city manager mentioned, just in general fund. For only projected a half-year, we've challenged staff to come back to, how quickly can we get this up and running? But, that has saved us $620,000, which is being able to take that dollars and able to fund additional personnel in the departments that, because it all comes out of the same general fund. So, we want to make sure that we acknowledge that, and thank you for the support of supporting us on that. So, we also recommend, and was unanimous, on increasing the fire assessment fee from the 321 to 338. The one thing that we were very focused on was the need, and communicated very strongly to the city manager and staff, that we were wanting to add additional people in the police department and the fire rescue. So this current preliminary budget adds 14 additional officers. We've also challenged the police management to relook at their organization and see how we can additionally shift members that are already sworn to additional patrol positions. So I would expect this number to increase by the time that we come to you in August, is what our hope is for the, for that group. We also know that the city has filed for a DLJ grant for an additional six. So we could possibly, if we get that award, and that award will be around October, September, October is what we're anticipating, we could be adding 20 additional officers. As the city manager mentioned, we had challenged to add an additional position to some of the EMS. When you look at the, a number of calls from the 911 calls, the vast majority are EMS. It's not burning buildings. It is people that have fallen, or are on a bench, or et cetera. So it's really the EMS. So to have, in two, I believe the next district, which had the highest incident, was in District One. So to have that additional person, then you don't need to send out a ladder truck when you're sent out with a three-person EMS. So it allows us to have our ladder trucks in position for better. So in this preliminary budget, there's an additional nine to add to those for the third-person rescue, and then the additional one, public information specialists. The city manager didn't mention it, but we're also looking at, for the fire station, or the EMS station downtown, substation number 88. That won't be up and running until 2025, but it looks like we'll be able to start hiring those 14 positions in the 2024 budget, as the budget continues to be worked on over the next couple of months. So that could be an additional, they would be hiring for that. As the city manager mentioned, so that you can get in perspective, as a city as a total, depending on all the funds, we would be looking in this preliminary budget of hiring an additional 24 people. So the city will grow by 24 employees to...
Outside of police and fire?
No, including that. So as a total city, it would be 24. 10 in fire, without advancing the 2025 hiring early. And then it would be the 14 in police.
Okay. So that's 24 with police and fire, with a maybe a six more if we get the DLJ.
Right. And then the possibly 14. So, we've caught positions, a total of nine positions out of other departments, and then, which he highlighted some of those. And then we've added into other non-general funds. There will be an additional in this proposed, which we don't need to get into the details today, but I just wanted to share with you, there is also on the table to add two additional positions in parking fund, an additional person in the airport fund, three additional people in the building permit fund, and two more individuals in the water sewer fund. So we get into that details, but today's focus was really on ad valorem. But I did want to mention, all of the department heads made presentations to us, and there are also additional funding in funds that don't take ad valorem dollars. So there will be additional staffing in that. The other thing that, over the years, that I've been an honor to sit on this committee, we have been looking at the infrastructure that had not necessarily been pipes. So this budget has the fleet replacement, it has the laptops, it has the desk, et cetera. So I do feel as if the budget is well-rounded at this point. We did have challenges. We feel, as a group, that there is still too many taxpayer dollars being laid out for special events at 1.6 million. And we also challenged that nonprofit funding of 2.1 million. Between the two of those, it was $3.7 million that if the commission felt that they needed to enhance public safety more than what we've put on the table of the 10 in fire, and with the possible of moving up the funding for 14, plus the 14 that are in this budget, that would be where the money would come from, versus taking money out of parks or taking it out of infrastructure, et cetera.
Let me ask you a question. I don't know if you know the answer to this question, but we have a full complement of police officers that we have established for our department. In the last fiscal year, were those, were all those positions filled?
No, they were not.
Approximately, what has been up to, like, a point in time today, how many vacancies remain in the police department?
I don't have today's number. If somebody can help me to today's number. I have a previous number, but someone corrected me last time, so I'll make sure that I don't...
We can get you that number. Staff's looking for that right now.
They'll give us that. But it has been, some months it's been 40, sometimes it's 50.
So, I mean, we talk about adding positions, but we don't even fill the ones we already funded. So, I mean, this is like smoke and mirrors here. I would like to add 14 more people, but we have to first fill the first 40. So that's a challenge, right?
Yes. And I think there's some reallocation that can be done to more patrol, as I feel as well. So we just felt that if somebody was looking at the top line, and they weren't satisfied with the number of officers that were being added in this budget, then our recommendation is, instead of going into other departments, that would be the focus.
I get that.
We're not saying to eliminate.
But there's no point even going there in conversation if we, I mean, who's to say we're even going to be able to find 14 more police officers, when we can't even fill the 40 that we've already budgeted? So, there's not even point, there's no point even, Laura, do you have any thoughts on this?
I was just going to share the number of vacancies is around 33.
33 at this point?
Officers, yeah, based upon the legislature's report.
And that's always a moving, moving number, we know, throughout the year. But it's never full. It's never full. And so that's the challenge we have to consider. Maybe a conversation with our, with our police officials should, we should undertake something like that to see, because I've spoken with other mayors throughout the country, and it seems to be, you know, I think we've even discussed it here on the commission, it's always a challenge because of the nature of the work and the salaries and all that. I've spoken with other mayors in the county, and, you know, they are all jealous of our compensation packages that we provide. So I don't know if we're really, you know, if we're, if that's the issue. So, anyway, it's a conversation.
I don't think it's an easy answer. There isn't one right or wrong answer, but we just wanted to share that if there was a majority of you that felt that that number needed to increase, that that would be where the funding would possibly be. We did not get into the detail, nor do I suggest that this group get into the detail of line items within that, because I think that as an advisor based upon a taxpayer's perspective, we've already given the indication that these nonprofits should be something that benefits more than a group. And over the years, some of them that only had maybe 30 people that it supplied have been eliminated, and I'm not going there. But if you felt that these enhancements weren't enough, then that would be where we felt that the funding would be, versus going in and the additional dollars that we're giving toward the park department to go from $1,550 an hour to $1,850 is not the place to take it from, et cetera. So we're going through the fine-tooth comb. But the purpose of today's meeting was really to make sure that all of you felt comfortable, that we felt comfortable, that you can approve a flat ad valorem. We think that there's still some numbers that can be gone through over the next six to eight weeks. You can contact us. We will be working with the, you know, we work on your behalf. So we will be challenging city staff and the department heads to look at as a fine-tooth comb as to how to do this. And then we'll come back to you in August, and then we'll be there in part of September. But I just want to open it up to questions.
Does anybody else on your, on the board have anything they want to add to this?
Vice Chair?
Jeff, John, Bill?
I agree with the mayor. You're absolutely right as far as a, we get a vacancy report on a monthly basis from the Director of Human Resources. It is a moving target. Some months, it's a lot higher. I have Marches here. The number has significantly gone down. Police did have 69 vacancies at the end of March, and now you heard...
March of 2023?
Yes. And now you've heard from Laura. It's gone down significantly. But it does fluctuate, and I agree, it needs to be looked at.
Okay. John, Bill, you're good?
I would just say, I know that the police have indicated to us that they want to set up a fourth district, and I think we're trying to give them the resources they need to be able to finally get to that point over the next couple of years. And that's why we want to see more allocation for them.
John, could you speak in the mic, so?
I'm done. Could you not hear anyone? I hear myself, or?
We heard you. I heard you, yeah. You mean, downtown, you mean? The fourth one downtown?
Yes.
Bill?
No, I think it's been summarized very well, with the emphasis being on public safety and the priorities of our infrastructure. And as we all know, with the increased homeless issue, by adding three additional officers that would be dedicated to the homeless outreach unit, will be very well-welcome by the community and also the beach businesses, because we hear often that the increased homeless around hotels and the beach community is becoming more and more of a problem, as well as in other parts of the city.
Right. Okay. Anyone from the commission have any questions of the chair?
I have a few things I'd like to ask.
All right. Well, we'll start with District One. John, do you have anything else you want to add?
So, I just actually want to kind of build on some of the comments you were making regarding the vacancies. So we, to your point, Mayor, have always had vacancies, and this is true of every city I've ever worked in. It tends to be fairly standard, because you've got people that are retiring, and the new hires aren't always coming onboard at the same rate as retirees. And so, our replacement rate is not always perfectly in match. But that being said, I think our goal really needs to be to increase the number of personnel, fire and police. I'm getting calls constantly from residents that, saying they're putting in calls for service, and they're being told that they may have to wait an hour.
They're busy, right.
Yeah, they're busy. And I think we could all acknowledge that we don't have enough folks on road patrol. We have a lot of other units that are staffed, but we don't have enough people out there, as they say, running and gunning. And we need more of that. And increasing the number simply increases the obligation for the department and HR to work together to get more aggressive in recruiting those officers. But if we keep the, if we keep the number at the level it's at, then we're going to get the level of effort at recruiting that we're having. And I also think that you can't separate this from the collective bargaining that we're going through right now. When people are looking at where they want to go work, they're going to look at two things. They're going to look at the benefit packages, obviously, it's a key recruiting tool, both for new hires and for experienced hires. But one of the things they also look... But one of the things they also look at is the fact that, for example, we've been negotiating with fire for in excess of 18 months. Regardless of the reasons behind that, people look at that and they see that as an unstable work environment for employees. So I think these two things are inextricably linked. Our ability to recruit is tied to having contracts that motivate people to want to be here, that make us the employer of choice. And if we're having trouble recruiting, then that tells me we're not the employer of choice. And we need to get there if we want to get those numbers up to a level that meets the expectations of our community. Because I have said this before, and I will say it again, public safety is the first job of local government.
Okay, Vice Mayor?
Thank you. In regards to the vacancy, I agree as well. We need to focus on keeping that opportunity, not decreasing the number of employees or the number of employees we want to hire for public safety. If I can just go back one step, I should have asked a question when we were there, but just for my clarity in regards to the fire engine?
Yes.
Okay, that is a down payment?
Down payment.
Okay, so how, what's the final, and when does that?
I think the final is...
That's, it's a pre-order. You have to put the money down in order to order it. But it is, it's the full amount. But it's, we have to pay for it upfront, is the concept.
So the amount there is the full amount?
Yes.
So we're paying it upfront?
Yeah, but I think the point is that it won't be delivered for two years.
Two years, okay, all right, all right. And in regards back to public safety overall, as John had said about public safety being paramount and what we're doing for our city overall. District Three, we do have that issue with the crime level. And we do need that assistance. We need those additional officers on the street to address the things that are going on. And what we should all understand as well is not only unique to District Three, this is something that would spread like wildfire. So we need to be focusing also on the opportunity to provide the manpower to succumb any situation that could arise, and that is arising as we see it going about in District Three and some of the other districts. So I want us to, you know, focus on that as well, not to roll back on the number of employees for public safety. Thank you.
Okay, Commissioner Glassman?
Thank you, Mayor. So I concur with the remarks that have been made prior, so I'll move on to some other things that I hear about a lot in my district. Bill touched upon homeless, and that is a big issue. And I think that's a really important issue for us going forward as a city. So I do want to make sure that we are prepared to deal with that, both from a manpower perspective and a resource perspective. I don't think I need to remind anyone about what we see on the news almost on a daily basis in cities like San Francisco, other cities that are suffering. Their downtowns are suffering. Ours is successful. We need to make sure that we keep it that way. But we certainly don't want to ever get to a point where we see businesses fleeing our downtown area, where we see hotel occupancy rates plummet in our downtown area, or any of the other effects that we're seeing, again, in cities such as San Francisco. We just cannot even get close to that point, and I want to make sure.
We can't even let the cycle start.
Correct, that's what I'm saying.
Once it starts, it's very hard to reverse.
Exactly. And I know that people sometimes complain about the way our city is growing, but that's not necessarily a bad thing. We did just see what that revenue, a billion dollars in new construction, has done to help us keep our mileage rate. Again, I don't want to keep hammering home at San Francisco, but cities such as that, that did not plan for growth, and in a smart way, saw the price of what they did have just get through the roof so that nothing was affordable, whether it was housing or anything else. They did not encourage smart growth like we do. So they did not see that investment. And then they are faced with what they're faced with today. So it doesn't take a rocket scientist to see what is a harbinger of things to come if you don't plan wisely and you don't grow wisely. So again, that homeless issue is a very important issue. And I don't mean to pick on homeless, because homelessness is not a crime. But the behaviors that I'm seeing in District Two, and that I've had meetings with constantly about, are really crimes. It's not the fact that these folks are homeless, but they suffer with substance abuse, behaviors that I don't even want to repeat here, from what I'm hearing from merchants, what they're going through. And it's having a negative impact, and some businesses are leaving, not just, I'm sure, my district, but others as well. So I really want to nip this in the bud, and I don't want to hear from constituents that when they make the calls, there's no one showing up, or they're being told that we're understaffed. These are just not good answers. So I really want to see this as a priority. Another concern that I wanted to express is something that I also hear a lot, is about stormwater systems. I know that we're doing everything we can with the first seven neighborhoods and the first tranche for stormwater, but I'm going to encourage you, City Manager, to do all that you can to expand and accelerate the CIP for stormwater projects. I know that the second tranche has another seven neighborhoods, but I know that we are looking at probably 15 neighborhoods that are crying out for more help. So I want to see if we can accelerate and expand the number of neighborhoods, and also speed up that process by which we will get design moving. Because that's also, again, in some of the low-lying neighborhoods in my district, I hear that a lot, particularly Sailboat Bend, Middle River Terrace. So I would just like to see us maybe do a little bit better. To tell people that design is going to start in 2025, it's not comforting. It's just not, because then you know that if the design is starting in 2025, you're looking at years later before you're going to see improvement. So we have to just do better with that. Those are the two issues that I hear the most. Again, homeless and the crimes associated, and then also stormwater and infrastructure. Thanks, Mayor.
Thank you. Commissioner Sternman?
I want to start by, first of all, thanking every one of you. I mean, the work you do is absolutely incredible. Could you hear me? Okay, absolutely incredible. I mean, not only just on behalf of the city commission, but on the city as a whole, I mean, coming together, working together throughout the year. You guys are doing a tremendous job, and on behalf of the city, I can't thank you guys enough. A couple of things. I'll start with the easy ones first, okay? Station 88, that's the one that's going to be the one being built on Los Olas, correct?
Yes, downtown. It's south of the river.
No, excuse me. If I may. So Station 88 is the one that is near Rio Vista, and that should be coming online either really late this year or early next fiscal year. So that's Station 88. The Los Olas garage is referred to as the Heron Garage, H-E-R-O-N. So those are the two upcoming stations.
Okay, and the dates that those are anticipated to come on?
So originally, we thought fiscal year '24 would be for Station 88. And so now it looks like it's '25, fiscal year '25. We can provide specific dates to you later. But then the next garage would be the Heron Garage, we believe, fiscal year '26, '25 to '26, somewhere in there.
Brian, you mentioned the net 24 employees coming onboard. I guess I'm looking at between fire and police, that's 24, but the mayor had said citywide. Is citywide a net zero, or is that citywide or just police and fire?
Okay, so citywide is a total of 24. And so the cost savings from the elimination positions and some, you could say shifted over to the ones that are being added in the airport or into developmental services, et cetera. So, or you can say that those savings went to them, but the net is 24, and it happens to be that fire and police happen to be the same number. But there was an additional eight positions eliminated, eight positions added in other departments, and then there's those. And that's without the DOJ, which is possibly another six. And without the shifting up from our '25 budget, the Station 88 of getting those in the pipeline, because the fire department has academies and they have to go through. So that has a longer lead time to hit the ground versus police department. So we may be able to advance those hiring.
But the 24 numbers are coincidences, right?
Yeah, it happens to be a coincidence.
You may have brought up a very good point, and everybody's touched upon it, but you have a question. I mean, if we have 33 vacancies and we approve more police, we simply just going to add the number of vacancies? But actually, that might not be true. If we have more vacancies, that put more pressure to raise the whole number up. We're recruiting more at the same time, so, I mean, the biggest fear was that you just add more vacancies and it doesn't, you're spinning your wheels. But maybe there is a reason to actually increase that number. City Manager, any thought on that?
So there's a couple of variables that are taking place. We're very confident that we'll continue the negotiation. As Commissioner Herb says, we want to be the employer of choice for public safety. And so, once we have the fine contract with police and also looking at having a streamlined system for intake, right now we are in the middle of implementation of a new HR ERP system that will go live October 1st. We feel that thereafter, we will have better opportunities to streamline the recruitment and also the hiring process and having quicker turnaround times with providing response to some of the candidates that can help us accelerate and minimize the vacancies as well. And in that, police management also is focusing on doing more marketing for this department in other parts of the nation. So that's going to help us as well recruit talent.
Thank you very much. Two other quick things. These should be pretty straightforward. Well, the first one's straightforward. Eliminating that credit card fee. I mean, it's looking like revenue, but actually it's not revenue, it's cost savings.
It's cost savings. So the first half-year, just in general fund, we're projecting into it, and then respending those dollars to fund additional people of 628,300.
Okay, so it's not revenue, it's cost, but the question, if you change people's habits and people stop using it as a result of that, and that whole, that half million, $600,000 goes away, it's not going to cost, there's no downside to that, correct?
No.
If people stop using credit cards, it doesn't hurt us at all?
If people stop using credit cards, then the savings will be even more.
Okay.
Because of the fact that we weren't, we were expensing when they use their credit card. So every time they use their credit card, we, as a city, paid the tune of over four and a half million dollars to credit card companies. So if they don't, as long as we're getting paid, it's a significant savings to the city across all funds. You'll see it in the parking fund, et cetera, et cetera.
And one last question, and the mayor alluded to this at the beginning, the same thing I was curious about. Nighttime code enforcement with City Managers, just eliminate, I mean, how many do we have now? If we eliminate it, and how's that gap going to be filled in? Because my neighborhood is very concerned about vacation rentals and code enforcement at night. So if you want a moment just to run that down?
So we're not eliminating nighttime code enforcement. We actually added four new positions this year. What we are eliminating is the one that, the program that's specifically for nighttime economy. We feel that there are other areas that we can, as a government entity, support, such as code enforcement, such as having police presence, and even from the public affairs aspect in attracting businesses, and also even in supporting some of the partners like Riverwalk. Those are elements that help drive the nighttime economy. So that's all we're saying.
So you're mixing, you know, so the answer to your president's or complaint about vacation rentals, nighttime economy had nothing to do with the enforcement of vacation rentals. And we've added additional code, and there is a process in place, and that has reaped significant benefits.
Thank you guys. You're doing an absolutely outstanding job. I can't thank you guys enough.
Thank you.
Great, thank you. And I did, I want to echo his comments. Thank you so much for all the work you put into this. I know, you say you've met four times since we last saw, met. That's a lot of work. So we know how much has gone into this, and thank you for helping us understand the budget. And one thing, as I'm sitting here, I've been signing these school resource officer agreements. And so I noticed the amount of contribution that's being made by the school board. Where the, it's an increase from the previous year. Those new numbers are incorporated in the budget, correct?
Yes, it's, I believe, 428,000?
Yes.
It's 103,000 per officer.
The new rates are part of the budget, right?
Okay, just want to make sure.
Yes, and we think that there should be additional in addition to that, so we can work with your counterparts on the school board to lobby for that. On your next meeting, your first presentation is going to be about the water and sewer. We did have the presentation in regards to the different ways of financing. We did weigh in. I don't know if you want to hear what our suggestion was. There were four different scenarios that I believe they're presenting.
Water and sewer for what?
For the, for the new, for the funding for the new water treatment plant, and how that affects the rate structure for the citizens. So there's four different, you're going to be, that's on your next meeting.
Right.
So I didn't know if, while...
Why don't we talk about that when we have the numbers in front of us?
Okay.
Yeah.
So we did review it, and I'll be, I'll stay for the next meeting. So if you have any questions, then we won't mix the meetings. But we did have an opinion on that.
Okay.
Okay.
And anytime, if any member of the commission has any questions of any members of the advisory board, you can always feel free to contact them directly.
Yes, absolutely.
Yeah.
Especially in District Three, where you don't have any representation.
Okay, anything further? Mr. City Manager, anything further?
Well, that's all. We just appreciate your time and your feedback.
Okay, Laura, do you have anything else?
Yeah, well, we haven't done the long-term projections yet.
Okay.
Oh.
I don't know if that's loaded.
Please continue.
I don't know if somebody from IT can load the next...
Oh, the StandTech.
So I'll just do the little intro as the presentation. So each year as part of the budget process, we partner with departments and StandTech. So as we get the numbers, the expenditure estimates and the revenue estimates, we give these files to StandTech, and we apply within their modeling assumptions. So for example, based upon historic assumptions, personal services, we might say over the next 10 years, salaries are going to grow by 5% a year. We know chemicals have been increasing more than normal. We might apply higher assumptions for chemicals. And then we meet with relative departments to talk about each fund, to say what's going to be changing in the upcoming years, what bonds do we have to issue, what is your capital needs look like? So I'm going to really quickly try to summarize all of the funds for you today. In StandTech's absence, I'd like to thank my colleagues from OMB that are here, as well as the departments and StandTech for their assistance with this effort. It is comprehensive, and the point is to let you all know as you're voting on the budget or making current year decisions, what that looks like over multiple years. So with that, please stop me if you do have questions, so that we can answer them. So again, this is why we do this, who's involved, really anyone in the budget process. The budget process in our city is, so for some of the new folks, it involves hundreds of people. The city manager meets with every single department. Usually each department director brings, you know, five or seven people. We have OMB staff, leadership staff. So it really is a team sport. So everyone has provided their input. The source data, we use 2022 actual results. At this point, audited results earn in, so we've taken the numbers from the financial statements for '22. For '23, we know what the adopted budget is. And for '24, the preliminary budget that was presented to you, that's what we're modeling off of. So we would have taken like the public safety salaries and modeled out that 5% increase. For all funds, we've assumed that we're doing a five-year lease rental for City Hall. And that, because not just general funds, but folks who work in water sewer funds and different funds are also at City Hall. So around six, I think it's like 65% is related to the general fund, and 35% would be other funds, but this applies to all funds. And we've assumed that beginning in fiscal year '26, $10 million, what that leverages is around 200 million in capital costs for the City Hall. So that's just a placeholder to make sure we're accounting for something. We don't know real costs at this point. So we'll quickly go over... know real costs at this point. So we'll quickly go over the key funds. General fund first. For general fund, we've assumed fire assessment, fall cost recovery in 22, as we discussed with you. In future years, we didn't assume that it would generate additional revenue and that goes to Brian's point about EMS calls seem to be outpacing the calls for fire suppression. You can only assess for fire suppression related services. So we've kept that flat in the 10 years of production. We'll chew that up every year. We're just not counting on that for our operations in future years. For Los Olas Marina, the good news is starting in 2025, we have 450,000 coming in and then we have revenue in 25 as well. And we're hoping that that gets up to 1.2 million in '28. So that's an additional source of revenue that the general fund can count on in future years. BEMR is the biggest wildcard revenue we have in this forecast. And so we're going to show you the impacts of the forecast with and without BEMR because in '28 through '33, it's, we're assuming based upon the models that were presented to the commission when you adopted the BEMR agreement, that it's going to bring in 17 to 23 million dollars in those years. But if those revenues don't come to fruition, the model looks very different. FPL revenue increase in '24 was significant and that is included in our base budget. Other assumptions for the government center, 6.5 million for '26. You all know mid-year when you awarded the police headquarters, it came in $45 million over budget. So because they've issued short-term debt, we aren't paying annual debt service on that and we're assuming that that needs to start in '25. The estimated annual debt service is 3.2 million dollars for the extra $45 million. For Los Olas Downtown Garage, that's the Haron lot, again, that the commissioner asked about. We're anticipating in this model, $2 million in '25. If that doesn't open till '26, that would just push out a year in the modeling. So we just try to be as conservative, conservative as we can in these models. Again, this is a key assumption too. Northwest Progressive, Flagler Heights, that sun sets right now in 2026. So that would free up $10 million to be used for other purposes in the general fund if that sun sets. So right now in our modeling, we do show that, that transfer to the Northwest going away. An $800,000 increase in expense fund because we would need to pick up some of those expenses. There's some key assumptions regarding pension contributions. This year, we had an overpayment, so we took advantage of that. So it lowered the 23, or the 24 payment by 930,000. We know we won't have that overpayment again next year. And then also, there's some lowered assumed rate of returns planned for prior, or for future years. So we've programmed those into the model as well. So with that, this model, or this summary, it's very small. The key numbers you want to look at, let me look, are the cash flow surplus. So for '23, you can see that negative or the red, 13.49. That means that in '23, we expect for revenues to be less than expenses by that amount. And the other key number is the millage rate. That's on the very top line, is 4.1193. So we've assumed for this full model that we never change the millage rate. And that second line is the assumed property growth. So in '23, we had a really large property growth, taxable value growth of 13%. This year, it was 11.7. We've assumed that that tapers off over the upcoming years. So in '25, we've assumed that rate's 8%, then 7.5, then 7. Obviously, if we could get this perfect, then we would probably be in other businesses like gambling, but these are like the best bets based upon some historical information. So we just want to show you what it could look like and we do have to put in some assumptions. So the other part that's important is the end of year fund balance. As you know, in the general fund, we target 25% of operating expenses and we don't include the transfers to the CIP and things like that. So right now, we're right at our target and we're anticipating to stay at that target as long as we don't have any unplanned mid-year things that take us below the target. And so in this model, we are okay for '24, right? So we have a balanced budget for '24. And then in '25, we actually, if we get 8% in and we're perfect on our assumptions, we'll have a little bit of a surplus. And then in '26, we're really close as well. In '27, when a few of the additional costs come online, you may need an adjustment, but this model works where you could keep the millage rate flat forever, but you're not enhancing service levels if all of these assumptions come to fruition. And a large part of the driving factor is the, the taxable value increase and not enhancing service levels. And so this is with BEMR in. If BEMR does not come to fruition, where the revenues from development don't come in those three years, we will need increases starting in '27 or, yeah, '27. So again, that's that 17 million dollars. It's assuming we get a portion of the sales of those properties in those years. So any questions on the general fund model? Okay. So this is a really healthy model. We're excited to see it. That's not where we thought it was going to go this year, but the property praiser came in with the larger numbers. This is a really busy chart, but the intent of the chart is just to show that we're really the only city in all Broward County that hasn't increased the millage rate in the last 16, or for 16 years. And the average of all other Broward County cities is 30% increase over that period of time.
Laura, one question.
Sure.
End of year fund balance, 2025, it's in red. Why, I mean, it's not, I mean, it's not in parentheses. It's not a, any reason that's in red?
Oh, because it falls below our 25% threshold in that year.
Okay.
So something interesting about that 25% is the fund balance number grows as the budget grows. So if the budget is 400 million, for example, it'd be 100 million. And then if it grows to a larger number, 25%, that number gets larger. So even though the dollar amount might not drop, the percent does drop.
Laura, can I ask you a question?
Sure.
On the previous slide, you say with BEMR revenue, does that include taxes or just the, just the percentage that we receive on sales?
So the taxes would be inferred in that 7 and 8%. So any growth in taxable value would be on that taxable value increase line?
So that, you're include, you, you're assuming that in, on that line and not, okay.
Right. And so then the BEMR revenues, we got a schedule that was presented to you when the BEMR agreement was signed.
Right, right.
And that's the, the schedule that we've applied.
It just seems awfully weak because 7%, if you think about the value of those buildings, they're going to be quite significant.
Right.
And so I just think the 7% numbers give within, you know, as they build. And let's say they, I think they're projected to build three of the buildings within five years, as, as has been told to me. I think it's been told to all of us. So that's the hotel and two of the condominium buildings. I can't imagine that we would not see at least $500 million in value added with those three buildings, if not more. It's just something to think about.
Yeah. So it might look even better than this and if it does.
That's what I'm saying. This number's a little weak compared to what the reality may be. But you're, these are assumptions. These are assumptions that they, that they're going to build, they're going to build in that timeframe and so forth. But I'm just thinking that, I think it's a little bit more optimistic than, than what you're showing here. But that's okay.
And we can, if I had the interactive model, I apologize that we don't have that with us today, but they could show, you know, the sensitivity of, you know, if you added 500 million, this is what it would look like. If it goes up, yeah, you'll have more ability to add services, to improve your capital improvement plan, things like that. And so that's why we update this every year. We can show some scenarios.
Okay.
That are more aggressive as well.
Okay.
The key, the key takeaway is if they don't build, then we're really challenged because that was a very agreeable new contract and we need that additional revenue, both in the top line, which enhances on new construction. Last year, we had a billion. The year before, we had 1.7 billion. We know that our, that according to our building department, those are going down. So we really need to encourage them to move forward and make it happen because that really helps us financially.
Right. And understanding we are a little short. So water and sewer, I'm going to go over some conceptual ideas here in your conference meeting. Susan Grant, the financial advisor, is going to dig into the modeling a little bit more to understand rate structures. But for the water sewer fund, this is just an update of the basic model. We're targeting three months of operating expenditures. For Prospect Lake, we're also targeting $30 million in cash funded capital annually. And that was similar to the question that Commissioner Herbst had earlier. Our capital can be funded through debt financing, which we would build the payment into the operating or cash funded debt. And so we talked about, you know, there being $24 million in cash funded debt and around 2022, $24 million in cash funded debt in the general fund. That number for the water sewer fund is $30 million over this 10-year period that we're targeting. That's in addition to the bond funded debt, which is $77 million in '24, '25, and then 170 million in '29 and '33. And New City Hall again, .9 would be, like 900,000 would be the portion related to water sewer fund. You'll be hearing more about advanced metering infrastructure, I believe, at your next meeting when that contract moves forward. But this model assumes $46 million in borrowing next year for '24. And then the annual cost to do that is $2.7 million a year. And there will be in future years, a 4% assumed increase in build volumes that will help to pay for that. So essentially, existing meters run slow. So we'll be getting more revenue once the new meters are installed. Prospect Lake, I believe Susan's going to talk a little bit more about this, but this is the P3 agreement and the terms included. And then there's annual increases in costs for the city. So once the plant comes online, we're responsible for additional chemical costs, additional electricity costs, some additional staffing we have to add. So all of that's added into this model for beginning in fiscal year 2027. And so this is just a summary that Andy put together for us. So for water, the annual amounts for Prospect Lake are going to be around almost $70 million per year by 2027. So the increase will be almost 70 million per year. Renewal and replacement increase will be $5 million. And then there'll be some offsetting savings of $3 million from AMI once it's fully implemented. And we're getting those larger build volumes for revenue. So the additional cost by 2027 will be $71 million a year. And so that represents 72% increase in our operating costs. So as you see the model, that kind of gives you a high level summary of why the rate's going up and it's these key things. And same for sewer. On the sewer side, central region feeds into it. We have a large user agreement for the regional sewer system. We have RNR increase, debt service on the, some of the bonds that are coming up. So the additional cost is 21 million over the base revenue of 73, which is a 29% increase. So that's going to be reflected in the rate modeling you see. So again, this will be discussed later, but one of, this incorporates the recommendation that staff will be making to you. Something that would be key for me to make sure that you understood is this results in a structural deficit in your budget in fiscal year '24. That means that revenues are going to come in less than expenditures. We'll be dipping below our fund balance minimum and that'll be for two years and then we'll be building back up. And it's all in a, an effort to control rate structures so that the rate payers aren't seeing such a large upward swing in the rates. But those are key budget considerations is that, you know, revenues are less than expenditures and that we are going to be going below our target for fund balance for two years. And I think I'm going the wrong way. Sorry about that. So in terms of our current bill, City of Fort Lauderdale is at the lower end when it's at 2,000 gallons. We move up as the number of gallons that folks use increase. And this is again, based on '23 rates. We'd have to do another comparison once '24 bills are approved. But right now, at 10,000 gallons per month, we're at 174.72. Any questions on water sewer or do you want to save those for conference? Any conference? Okay, sorry. So stormwater, this is one that you all started talking about a little bit. Stormwater assessment fee pays for maintenance and capital. And so these are some key assumptions. Bottom line is in order to do the, the tranches, which is the additional $200 million in '28 and '33, we have to build a rate structure that will support that debt. And it requires a 10% rate increase every year. So you saw, or on the summary, we showed you that what that rate increase looked like. It's a 2367 monthly increase or an increase from $258 a year to $284 a year. And a 10% increase each year thereafter will be required in order to support the debt. And the currently planned tranches, which are '28 and '33, if you advance those tranches, the rate impacts will come sooner as well. Any questions on that? All right. So one key thing that I always like to point out for stormwater is a lot of stormwater bill, a lot of utilities still build stormwater as part of the utility bill or it's a part of their general fund. So there's not as many comparators in this realm. So we're kind of near the top with other coastal cities here, but the comparisons aren't the same. So for sanitation, there's not really a lot to talk about. You guys talked about this a lot mid-year when they transitioned the bulk service. After the bulk service was transitioned, essentially, we're good with the 4% annual rate increase in our current modeling. Unless you guys have more questions, I'll just move on. Okay. And we are towards the top of the rate for sanitation bill. For building fund, they changed the structure of the fee and dropped the revenues. So we have our second year of 25% increases planned for 2024. And then going forward, it should be a more modest increase of 4.5%. And this is just bringing us back to the revenue generation we were previously at before the change in rate structure. For regional sewer, this is with our friends in Oakland Park, Wilton Manners, Tamrac and Davie. Their 17.4% were 82.6. We have an agreement where we true up the costs at the end of the year. The key driver here is renewal and replacement. They do a study to say, what do we need to replace and repair over the next 20, 30 years? And then we have to fund one, 1/20th of that amount each year. And so that, the cost has gone up and then the projects have gone up too. So, and so the rate increase for our large users and ourself will be around 6% this year. And then it'll need to be almost 14%, we think, in 2025. But this is already figured into our water sewer rate modeling. Parking fund's in good shape and there aren't rate increases planned in the current modeling. Airport is also in good shape. They're going to lose $1.3 million in annual revenue from the general fund that we talked about, related to freeing up the restrictions on the Lockhart Park property. Or, and so it's still positive cash flow after that goes away. And I think that's it, unless you all have questions.
Any questions from the commission? I think a lot of this is, we need to digest it. And if we have any questions, we can certainly contact you, Laura and/or Brian. But there's a lot of information here, some of which we knew already, but a lot of it is, is new to us. So thank you. Thank you, Laura.
You're welcome. And we do update it every year. So hopefully that's helpful where you hear, once you hear it a few times, you're like, oh, I remember that.
Yeah.
Right? So, all right. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Laura. Mr. City Manager, any further business?
No.
Okay. All right. We'll adjourn and thank you so much again, Budget Advisory Board. Thank you for your commitment and sacrifice to our community. I know it's a lot of hours you put in. So, and it's. I know it's a lot of hours you put in, so, and it's all for free. So I appreciate it. And we'll convene our, our conference meeting at 1:40.
Yeah.
Thank you, gentlemen.